Good evening, welcome to our city council committee whole meeting for tonight Wednesday, June twenty first, two thousand and twenty three. All members of the council are present, council member Green is participating electronically online. We're joined by members of the council office staff, Mayor Burton is here as well as members of the mayor's staff and various members of the public and those who will be presenting tonight. We're having some technical issues, so we are not streaming live to YouTube, however, the Zoom is live, so people can watch that if they'd like. Well, I'll soon will have this posted to YouTube shortly after the meeting concludes. We'll start off this evening with our Western Stampede Report, and that's by Ash, excuse me, that'll be by Ashley Dupler, Ms. Dupler. Feel free to take either of these and just hit the button on the right, so the red light goes on.
All right, thank you all, we're about a week and a half away from the Western Stampede, which is exciting to think about. Yeah, lots to, lots of planning, lots of help from all the departments and divisions citywide. I emailed you all earlier, the schedule of events, I intended to print, but we're unable to print currently, so all electronic for you guys. The schedule, which will just break down that Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Also on there are the different colored shirts that we have for the stampede each night, just so you're aware of which Western Stampede shirts to wear. A couple of new things, kind of our standard Saturday, we have the Spike Ball Tournament, the Slack Breakfast, which that's just where those who, those cowboys who are not participating in the rodeo at night, they actually perform and participate during that time. And we also cook them and serve them breakfast. I know several are volunteering for that, and if you wish to, just let us know, and we have spots and can use the hands. Then the Carnival Food Trucks, a new event that we have is our kids rodeo this year, from three thirty to four thirty. So that's an idea that Sherry and I got from, we were able to go to the National Western Stock Show for professional development in January over in Denver. And it'll just be over in the Brilliant Amphitheater, right on that concrete pad. And we have DIY Cool Noodle Horses, which is something that our events intern had come up with, has used before, and they're really cute. Kids can make the little cool noodle horses and then run a little barrel race course to feel like little cowboys panning for gold. A little, you know, fake gold coins that they can pan for, a bunch of coloring sheets, and then just the barrel racing. There'll be some Western displays and everything too for photo opportunities. And our Western Stampede royalty will be there helping, as well as some volunteers that we have from the community, so that'll be, it's a free event, just for that hour, three thirty to four thirty. In hopes to, if people don't have rodeo tickets, bring their kids there and get excited for the rodeo, maybe then, you know, look to purchase that night or the nights following, and just provide an opportunity.
Real quick, is that each night or just one night?
That's Saturday, Monday, and Tuesday. So it's not on Sunday, as we don't have a rodeo Sunday night, so just kind of keeping it on Sunday, the vendor fair and the food trucks and the carnival. But this is just a kind of a fun and free activity also for kids, if they can't afford to, to go to the rodeo, they still can kind of access their own rodeo in a sense. So we're looking forward to that, being a new event in addition, we're not sure what, how it'll go. One of our first Friday's table and event, when we shared about it, a lot of interest, so we're excited to see how that one, how that one works. And Camille's come up with some great ideas, so we're excited about that one. Sunday again is just our Carnival Food Trucks and Vendor Fair. And then Monday and Tuesday, we have the standard Carnival Food Trucks, Kid Rodeo, Vendor Fair, Rodeo, real rodeo at night, and the parade obviously on the fourth, with the fireworks to follow. So nothing new besides the Kid Rodeo on the schedule. Our Vendor Fair, we contracted with Good For Life Markets, and we filled all fifty slots, so we'll have a full Vendor Fair over in the parks. We're looking forward to a really just packed and fun weekend. Is any preliminary questions on the schedule or?
Not seeing any questions.
No, alrighty. We do have an update as far as media that we'll have on site, Marie sent me over the message. So we're gonna actually have Fox Nation, Abby Hornisek will be joining us on Monday, July third at the rodeo. Marie will be working with them to get the shots that they need. They'll mostly be behind the scenes, but we'll be out and about getting footage of the carnival, the food trucks. And our episode will actually air on July fourth on the National Network Channel, so that's pretty exciting that we'll have some national coverage. Local Fox thirteen will be joining us like last year during the grand parade. And Marie will be sending out a press release to the media before the event, just letting them know the schedule of events. So any further media questions, she said, just pass along to her and she'll be happy to answer those for you all, so kind of exciting there. I had our shirt colors, which those are again on the schedule of events, so just making sure we have those right stampede shirts. Also with the email, you receive the parking maps and then just an overall map of where to meet at that seven thirty grand entry. And then just also the rodeo grounds map as well, so you're able to kind of just see where everything's happening, get a good layout in case anyone asks you questions. Or that way you're able to help direct the community as well with any questions that come up. So our tickets are looking pretty good so far, Saturday night is our highest selling, being the only weeknight rodeo, not, not a surprise there, and we expect to, to sell out as we have in the years past. We're looking ahead of schedule compared to where we were last year on ticket sales. And our carnival tickets pre-sale can still happen, luckily those are all done in person. So those will start next Monday, June twenty sixth, until supplies last, but they're scheduled for that week prior, the twenty sixth to the thirtieth. And lastly, and now I sent Alan over the parade information for the council. He has your numbers, all of that information, where to meet. Just a reminder that our distribution of materials, so any candy, any pamphlets, handouts whatsoever, must be passed along the parade route, not thrown from vehicles. And then any refills must be done from the back of a vehicle. We do have candy and then also we'll have buckets as well for you all to utilize for those items. Any questions or?
So just to clarify, on the parade, I did have someone ask me earlier today, you can pass out literature or flyers or no?
If you're part of the parade float and you have things to hand out as you're walking with your float or like your group, you can, but it has to be along the side, you can't throw items.
But it can be, you can do literature, that was the specific question.
If you're part, yeah, so we have, it's the distribution of materials, including but not limited to literature, promo materials, coupons, ads, and other favors, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, just not thrown, is our big, big component.
Could I jump in just real quick and kind of elaborate on the answer with that? And I apologize, Ashley, if you've covered this already, but if there are council members who are going to be looking to pass out campaign material, it'd be important for you to make sure that you're doing that as part of your separate entry and not as part of the, the council entry in the parade. Happy to answer any questions about that if there are any after we get done here.
Alright, I'm not seeing any other questions, anything else?
No, I guess any questions, I know I gave you all packets of anything that you requested for passes and everything. If there's anything else that you need, just let us know, but you should be all set as of now, and again, any questions? You should all have my cellphone number, Sherry's cellphone number, if not, I'm happy to give that to you all, as our office numbers are not working, but we can happy to, to work via cellphone. So just message or email and happy to help with any follow-up questions or needs that you might have.
Questions, but thank you really for everything, there's a lot of behind the scenes work, I mean, I know Pamela's done that type of thing too with events, and it's not an old person's job, let's put it that way. Yeah, there's a lot of running, so I have a lot of respect for you, I get what you guys are doing twenty-four seven, I think you make like two cents an hour, so thank you for everything you're doing.
We appreciate it, yeah, and obviously couldn't do without the help of many people behind me as well in other divisions, but thank you.
Alright, thank you. So next item, next item we have is the discussion topic for a petition by Peterson Development with a general plan map amendment. And we're gonna start first by hearing from staff a little bit on this one, and then we'll hear from Peterson as well.
Thanks, Council, yeah, I'll, I'll lead off real quick. We're really grateful that the council's given us time to bring land use map amendments or rezones, changes in density to, to this whole body. It really helps us user time efficiently and effectively. I want to point out the fact though, that the, the proposal in front of you today, or the, I guess, the, the property. We've been working with Peterson Development for well over a year on this, and so it kind of predates the new process, but we, so what I'm trying to explain is, is in your packet, your RCA, in the future, we hope to bring, I guess, more succinct analysis so that the council can be more prepared for these committee of the whole meetings. That being said, we're here to provide kind of an oral rendition of, of our, of our review, and which we've done plenty, and that's why Taylor's here, he's the, he's the expert. And then one of the main impacts potentially to the city with this proposal is on our infrastructure. And that's why Mr. Davenport is here with us, and so I'll turn the time over for a quick overview of what the proposal is and hear from Taylor and then some, some additional insight from Mr. Davenport.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Council, for this time, really appreciate it. Just kind of going into where the project is, I'll do a brief overview. You can see outline there in red, it's on the far west side of the city, just south of the Sycamores. Zoom in closer just to see kind of the built environment there. So there's existing quarry here, gravel pit, you can see that area highlighted in pink. Above it is more of a dry farm, so because of that nature, we do have just kind of some grade and topography issues that aren't typical for development in the city. This is the current, future land use plan for it, so you can see it's divided between very low residential, low residential public facilities and future park. You also notice that there's a little piece that's outside of the city boundaries, they're proposing annexation to bring that in with this project. The applicant is proposing the PC zone. Too tall, you need a longer stem. The applicant is proposing a PC zone for the entire parcel, so we just put kind of the definition of what that PC zone is here in the slide. It's to encourage imaginative and efficient utilization of land through clustering of buildings and the integration of compatible uses, residential, commercial, recreational. That's to encourage and create a convenient, efficient, effective integration of uses. So that's what their code says. And here's what the applicant's proposing, we can see there's a mix of fifty foot wide, five thousand square foot lots, essentially, there's a hundred and sixty-one of those. Hundred and seventy-five carriage units and sixty-nine townhome units. There's a little over twenty-two acres of open space of that four point four acres is manicured and active open spaces, how they're classifying it with the other, almost eighteen acres being passive open space, and a lot of that is pretty steep hillsides. So here's just the, the applicant's kind of concept map for how those parts would work. As you can see, there's kind of three clusters, there's one in the townhomes, there is another one over kind of in the northwest corner, and another one closer to the south. One change that we have, since we last saw this, is up at the top, number eleven. At one point, eighty-two hundred south was anticipated to go through to the west, with development to the north, that actually is not possible anymore. And there was a road stub there that really had no use, so they're turning that into a trailhead park. So as we talked about, there are some significant grade in this project. Everything you're seeing there that's red has a slope that's over thirty percent. The orange is twenty to thirty percent, by our code, grades over thirty percent aren't buildable. So you can see a lot of that is through the center of the project where it's being used as open space. It's one unique thing about the PC zone, if you're aware, is there's not development standards, like we have in our R one eight zone. So whatever the council approves, if they were to approve the rezone for the development standards, would be what the development standards are for the project. So on the left side of the screen here, we can see what the applicant is proposing. And on the right side, staff attempted to find something that was as close as possible in our existing code. So that would be in our R one five and our R three zone. As you can see, if you've taken some panel look at them. We have a little bit wider frontages and larger setbacks in both of those R one five and R three zones and what they're proposing. But it's all land use decision, it's totally at the discretion of the council, if they were to approve this rezone and master development agreement, what type of standards they would want to approve there. Similar to this, we don't have setback standards for the PC zone, so the applicant again is proposing what setbacks they feel would be appropriate for this. Again, that would be up to the council discretion, that's where rezone was approved, if they would approve them with these setbacks or something different. A lot of discussion between staff and the applicant has been about these cluster laws, which have private driveways that service to four and sometimes six units. Some concerns that we have are they're, they're fairly narrow at sixteen feet wide. The private driveways, we don't want to have public utilities in them, but also we have this case where we could have four or six units potentially off of private drives that have no way to get to those with a sidewalk or a man door. So the only way you could access them as a pedestrian would actually be walking down this narrow driveway, which has multiple houses accessing onto it. On the right, there was a staff recommendation that if you were going to address something like this, we feel like it'd be appropriate to have sidewalks and man doors that would be able to get every house from their door to a public right-of-way in a sidewalk, without having to walk on those driveways. So something that we presented to the D I C and they felt like if this were to come back, that would be an important piece. But ultimately, that's up to the council's discretion as well. I say that just because a master development agreement would, would be required if the PC zone was adopted. Prior to the PC zone being adopted, there's other features that we'd look for, so some signage, elevations. So those are just things we'd like to see, staff would say if these were facades that were going to be adopted, we'd want to make sure that there was additional features added to those siding rear elevations that are adjacent to public right-of-ways, so we don't have blank walls, I could support that. We've shared those comments with Peterson as well. So as mentioned, we did take this to our D I C, that was on April twenty fifth, and they had the following feedback. There was concern about the number of guest parking stalls. That there wasn't enough, for example, and that the ones that there were there in the carriage home project would be difficult to make sure that people weren't parking there. And allowing those to be open for the guests, that would ultimately be kind of a challenge for the H O A to manage. There was concern that Hydons do that residential, wouldn't it be appropriate in this location as it's pretty far from transit? The D I C didn't feel like the project complied with the purpose of the PC zone, as it is only residential. They felt the project would be more appropriate if development standards were more in line with standards already established in code. So through the carriage lot, home portion of the building should only have two lots off a private drive, which is something more typical to what we've seen. They did like the elevation than the proposed signage though. And as mentioned, they voted for O to recommend the proposal be revised based on the above. They did mention if it went to the planning commission without changes, they would recommend denial. Yeah, so we can help right now.
I'm here to answer questions and to give some feedback regarding the utility plan and the utility, the adequacy of utilities in this area. Just as a reminder, when we create our master plans and create capital facilities plans, they're based on the adopted general plan. So when you change the general plan, our, our master plans and our cap facilities plan become outdated very quickly. In this case, they're not, the applicant's not proposing just a few changes, they're proposing a lot of change in density for this location. The applicant has tried to help the city by hiring a consultant to prepare a report. It's still raw, there's still things that need to be updated, but this is an early stage in the development. So realize any feedback I may give you is still going to be raw. With this development, some of the impacts for water, this area has both Zone Six and Zone Seven in this development. In Zone Six, the, the applicant points out that we don't have storage currently in our general plan for this. They also point out that we'd have to change our requirements with Jordan Valley. Just as an estimate or a good source, you can keep this in mind. The ERUs that they're proposing for storage in our current rates, if we just, if we had a tank building and we added additional capacity to carry this additional request for density, it would cost roughly six hundred thousand dollars for that, for the storage, the extra storage. For source, the amount of source that they're talking about. We are recently building a well in Zone Five, it's our well eight, it costs about three million dollars to provide the source that they're looking for. So I just wanted to give you a ballpark figure of what we're talking about when you approve something like this. As far as Zone Seven's concerned, I have zero facilities in Zone Seven, I don't have a storage tank, I don't have source, I don't have any facilities. So if you were to choose to approve this, then we would have to enter an agreement with the applicant that no homes would be built in Zone Seven until facilities were there.
That seems kind of obvious, because you can't build a house without water, sewer. I guess you can, they used to, hundred and fifty years ago. Now, my question for you was based on something you said, now I just forgot it because of what you, because of, I know, because of not building in, in areas. Mostly, the costs that you're bringing up are mostly going to be applicant born costs, I mean, costs of putting in infrastructure, things like that.
They would have to be, because I don't have that in any of my budgets or my plans or.
Right, and they're not part of capital projects or capital improvements or anything like that.
Have nothing like that, that you guys have approved for us, so these would have to be applicant born.
And they normally would be, right, and a development coming in on, on dry land, so to speak, on, on undeveloped land, most infrastructure costs are borne by the development.
As I go through these, these are abnormal costs, so not a lot of developers provide.
Because of the location, right, because of how far up in.
Right, but also because this is very costly, so the question for them is whether they can afford it or not, and that's not something I could, that's something the applicant could, could better speak to. But I, not many applicants do that. Okay, alright, thanks. The, just to go over the others, there is also additional sewer impact, so that's the water. If you're looking at sewer impact, again, the applicant has submitted a report, I haven't talked specifically with the development engineer that prepared the report, but I have concerns about capacity in Seventy Eight Hundred South. They identify concerns from Fifty Six West all the way up to Copper Rim Drive. I'm actually concerned from Fifty Six West all the way up to Seventy Eight Hundred South, without talking with them in more detail. I can't excuse those concerns, so the cost for improvements from Fifty Six Hundred West up to Copper Rim Drive is about two million dollars. That's about a third of the way up to Seventy Eight Hundred South, so that could turn into six million dollars. It depends on my discussions with their engineer about some of the assumptions that they've made when they did this. My last concern is with stormwater, the stormwater pond that they have designed is not the right size, it needs to be larger than what they've shown. And they've also underestimated or overestimated how much water that they can actually put into our storm drain system. So that will also cut down the future number of units that, that they would show according to their concept map, perhaps they would move those in other places, but that pond has to increase in size. And that's the comments that I have, do you have any questions?
Greg, this is Kelvin Green, I have a question. With the low-impact development that we approved last council, does the pond have to be bigger? Last council, does the pond have to be bigger if they use? Um like the bio swells down the middle, down park strips and those kind of things.
Um Kelvin, you're thinking along the right lines. They could decrease the size of that pond. By putting in some low impact development. The difficulty is most of the open space are on uh hillside slopes. Where you could really um store water and because of the density, there's not much area for park strip that isn't next to a home that would. Um I would have concerns about damage to the homes. So in a in a project that was less dense. Um or they had more parking areas where you could hold that water that wasn't next to. Um a structure, that would be a, that might be something I could bring up with the applicant. They haven't uh had any L I D features that are shown on their plan.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Davenport, I have a couple of questions. So you you address sewer to a certain. But what about seventy eight all the way down to the plant?
Um I think that uh. While there may be concerns with that in the future, uh the two, the. Three hundred, two to three hundred actually units are talking about this area. Can the other areas probably can, the other lines. Can accept that and we'd probably be okay. So speaking on the applicant's behalf, I would probably say that those pipes, this isn't as big of an impact that would affect those. Pipes uh dramatically, but it would take away capacity from those pipes, yes.
How how does that affect capacity for future, other future growth though? Especially, we've got some, I don't I don't know where all the sewer lines run. But we've got some commercial areas that we want out there.
Um I I think that that's something I could look at when we come back for the next session on this. Realizing this is just a work session, but um. Realize you only have so many E R U's in that line. And you guys need to decide how you want to use those. This would take three hundred of those E R U's out of that line. If that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, that does make sense. Let's see if I can, if you've answered all the rest. So. Say the applicant was willing to fund these increased projects, what would a timeline look like?
Uh one of the projects, the fifty sewer project from fifty six west to Copper and Drive is in our current capital facilities plan. Uh it hasn't been scheduled for a date. None of the projects I've talked about are scheduled for a date. So they. Certainly wouldn't be any sooner than uh or they would probably. For that one, it's probably in the next seven year window. We don't have a date for exactly when that is that I can remember off the top of my head, but. It's not, it's it's not next year.
Ways out. Okay. Um we've talked about, actually, when I say we mostly, you have talked about as we build up on the hills. Farther out, that there's going to be increased cost to pump the water up there. Is that something that this area would require?
Again, that zone seven tank, that will have, that will be the highest cost water that you could purchase in West Jordan. Uh I'm still not sure exactly how we're gonna get source water into zone seven, whether that will be a cooperative effort with Jordan Valley Water. To help us with that, or whether we'll put our own tank in zone seven and and feed the rest. Uh that's something that will have to be worked out in the future because we don't have a plan for that yet. I don't know that. Any details I gave you would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'm understanding is this is a very costly area to develop. So the developers have to balance. Being able to make money yet also be able to develop the land that's going to support our city. Is that what I'm like hearing?
I would say this, we have planned for this development at a certain development size. So if you were to develop. At that size, this is not necessarily a expensive piece of property to develop. As you increase your density over the general plan size, it gets more expensive to develop because now you're. Now you are providing utilities that the city didn't anticipate. And is not gonna spread over a large area to pay for. So it's a smaller area that's gonna pay for those improvements. Does that answer your question?
Kind of. Cause I love the layout. Honestly, I like how it's buffered and like the the more high density is in the middle and it buffers everything. I think that is. Exactly what we have as a council's been saying over the last years. I was very impressed with that. So I wanna figure out how we can make this balance. Of having that infrastructure yet also having a beautiful neighborhood exist.
And and again, I think that's with the applicant's help. That's why we have this work session, right? They have to decide. How many units are good for how many improvements they're gonna put in? The more improvements you put in, the more it's going to cost. It's not necessarily just a. A uh a a simple and and again, economics are better explained by them, not by me, because I don't do the. I don't do the development economics.
Right, just like I wouldn't ask you how much it does wood cost to build all these houses? How much is the sheet rock gonna be? What about the concrete? What about the asphalt for the roads?
Exactly.
I I don't care. That's not, that's not our, that's not our cost to figure out. That's these guys and they're gonna have to figure it out with. The people that buy their houses and if they can't sell them for how much it, you know, they're not gonna build it and that. You know what I mean? It's it's just like if somebody comes to us for a business license and we say, well, how much are you paying for your french fries? It's it doesn't, it doesn't figure into the equation. So none of those costs bother me. What about, the only thing that would bother me is. Are are lines upgradable sewer lines, water lines, um stormwater? Is it upgradable to accommodate this? Can it happen? If it can happen, they're gonna pay for it. Not us. And great, if they can make it pencil, then cool. And if they can't make it pencil, then great. I'm worried, the only other thing I'm worried about might be um collapsible soils. We've had that in the area. I wanna make sure that's gonna be taken care of. Properly so we don't have cracking foundations uh in five or ten years. You know, as far as the D R C's uh concerns, I I kinda get the high density this far from mass transit. However, you're not gonna get mass transit until you have people. If all you build is half acre lots, they're not gonna put a U T A bus out here. It's just not gonna happen. So you need people or or they don't drive empty buses out to neighborhoods in advance of the neighborhood being built. They just. That would be silly. Other than that, I I mean, for the most part, I a couple little things bother me, you know, the the six carriage lots on one driveway. I prefer four. Uh I live in the carriage house where that has four per driveway and that's where I live and that's where I've lived for fifteen years. My youngest son is. Sixteen, so he's been there since he was almost two and my oldest is twenty three, so she was almost eight. We've been there. Uh for a long time. So I'm perfectly comfortable. I know what it's like to live in houses like that. People do it. And it's great. It's a nice way to kinda split the difference between a townhouse and a single family house. It kinda gives you a nice. Like kinda hybrid thing and there's definitely a market for that. But again, the market's not mine to worry about. That's theirs to worry about. So for the most part, I the 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 concept plan doesn't bother me. The um the density. You could argue one way or the other, but it's, I think it's done well. I don't, I don't think um, I think if it was all like R one five, I think we'd have a problem. Um but having a kind of the mix of housing types and stuff like that, like you want to plan community, I think is is appropriate. So. Um a lot of this works for me. The slopes uh kinda wig me out a little bit again because of the soils issue. So. I didn't, I hadn't seen that before tonight. Um so this, but you know what? The engineers have to worry about that, not me. So for the most part, I think uh if you get it right, eh you know, you sign off on everything, we're meeting all the things and they can make it pencil out financially. Then then I'm okay with it.
It's so not Mister Davenport, but um on the current map, it maybe Taylor. I don't know which one of you, but on the current, on our current map, there's a big blue spot and what is that for? Says public facilities. Lots of things can be public facilities.
Uh so originally that was um us doing an attempt when we did the general plan of planning schools. And so that was the attempt of maybe a school in this area. My understanding is. Jordan School District hasn't shown interest in the site.
I think our city better get Jordan District to show interest on land west.
They they actually do have some further south down by the uh power. I think I think they have or have or were interested in some further down. See the blue? Oh, I'm looking at my own PDF, not what's on the screen. So there's a little public facilities where the where the power lines are on Bacchus Highway, about eighty six hundred south. Further south, Jordan School District is planning on his elementary school there. They swapped it for the land on eighty second and fifty six that was um. That was across the street from Sunset Ridge.
When did they give you this info?
This is three, four years ago.
I'm I'm not sure that's still, I actually had a conversation with him like a month ago and they said they had no plans for anything in West Jordan at all.
Well, if you ask him now or you ask him ever, I mean, of course.
And he said they they don't have any plans. This was only like a month ago and I asked him about the schools out west and they said they had no. Plans for any schools out in West, West, West Jordan on their five year plan.
Okay, but these houses aren't gonna be done in five years. So I can see why they wouldn't wanna build a school and have it sit there and wait until.
So. I think staff has brought a lot of good points up. I think that um the design review committee has some legitimate concerns. Uh I have concerns uh and and while, yes, it's up to the engineers. I think we too have a little bit of skin in the game. I. I don't imagine those people whose homes slid down in Draper hold their elected officials harmless. Oh, it wasn't their fault. I'm sure that there's some animosity about that. Um so it concerns me because as council member Jacob brings up, we do have soils that aren't real stable out over there and. That's a lot of development. So and and I also am concerned because while we say. Sure, the developer will pay for all of that. There is a current one that we already approved, but we thought they were going to do something. And now they're not. So guess who gets stuck with that? We do. And that concerns me. So I i- if this goes forward for me. There's gonna have to be a very solid M D A, M V P. And a lot more information in there than maybe we sometimes put because I can see some concerns that. That need to be addressed and I am concerned about. It's a balancing act. We have to balance in our city and. We just went through the general plan and the general plan map. We haven't even approved it yet and we're gonna change it. So. It it almost makes me wonder why we bother with that if everything's gonna change and then and then we can't get any of our utilities, right? So I have some concerns.
Council member Green, then I'll chime in.
Thank you. Uh just a couple of comments. Um. First, I'm trying to figure out. And this is, this is uh uh just a rhetorical question and I'll fill it in myself. I'm trying to fill it, fill in why the D R C said this is high density residential. This isn't high, so overall, this, I I wanna make sure that we're clear. This has some high density parts to it. Because it has the the multi, you know, because it has the townhomes and it has the cottage homes. But the overall density of this project is about five point six units an acre. So I would not. Uh I would not call this a high density residential project. And I think that we need to adopt the standards that are in the general plan. And call it i- if they are trying to to uh amend the general plan, we use the the uh. The density in the current or in the general plan that we're proposing and uh not. Not, not. Again, call something, y- you know, high density always. Um institutes fear and everything else and we need to get this right. Uh and and make sure that we're doing what is supposed to be. A- as I I have mentioned and I have mentioned as the developer, um the P C zone does normally requires commercial. Um I think that given the location of this piece. Commercial's not gonna be appropriate and so we may have to modify the ordinance to allow us to. Uh have a little bit of wiggle room on the commercial if we decide to move forward with that. That I I I I had a couple of concerns with the project, particularly the cottage driveways um and no sidewalks. Um I I I've actually mentioned that to the developer. I also mentioned the developer, the cottage parking lots. Uh the pa- the cottage parking spaces may be a little short, that if they have a visitor, they don't wanna block the cottage. As somebody else's driveway. So um they're taking a look at that. I think there's some there, but overall, I mean, the layout for me is. Not necessary, is is not bad. I think the difficulty that we have with this piece of property and I think that the and and I I agree with. Council member Whitelock, council member Jacob, is that we have some soils issues here. The problem, the problem of this this property is, is that it is. Half of it or a third of it is an old gravel pit. Um and 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 so. You know, some of the very low density may not work here for a gravel pit. So, you know, I'm willing to, and so I'm willing to take a look at that. In the, in the future, you know, eh with this kind of a design. I think they're doing the right thing, connecting trails and those kind of things. So. I I think it's got that my, I like I said, I I would have some concerns with the soils. I think I agree with that. We obviously, you know, you go back to when you were in Sunday School. The wise men built the house on the rock and what happens when you build on sand? Well. You you kinda saw that in Draper. So I just wanna make sure we don't have the the Draper issue. On the west side of West Jordan and uh I think I'll leave my comments at that right now.
All right, so um my thoughts real quick, uh similar to council member Green. I'm not terribly worried about the concept. It seemed reasonable, given the area. Uh it doesn't quite fit the intention of P C. However, there are other areas where we have done P C without necessarily the commercial. Uh granted, I was in opposition when the council did that. Um and they said, hey, let's look at the adjoining part, but here it it doesn't quite seem to fit. But there is an obvious need for creativity and flexibility, given the the terrain. Um so I I'm very open to that piece. I also would echo almost verbatim what council member Jacob said earlier. I I won't rehash that, but um. Well, I won't rehash all of that, but um the thing that I think I wanna focus on most for me is. But I I guess what I wanna get from staff are which questions specifically, do you need direction from the council on this evening? Because there's a lot of pieces involved with this. Um as you're talking about some of the concerns with the infrastructure, um I very much appreciate. The uh the highlighting of, well, you have a general plan and a future land use map and all of our infrastructure and utilities are geared to this. So this is what we're built to support. And when we change what's being expected, that's gonna have a significant impact downstream. Often, we're thinking about zone changes independently from the utilities and. And to an extent, they are because as we're looking at, well, should we allow this to go P C? That. There's an inter- there's definitely an impact on utilities, but we could change the zoning on something. With the understanding that, okay, they're gonna have to follow up and utilities are gonna have to match. So. Um as council member Whitelock was suggesting, we'd want a very strong M D A to make sure we get support for all the infrastructure impacts that this would have. So. I'm, I think I'm more wanting to hear the council's support or opposition to some of the more basic changes like. Is this the type of development we'd like to see here? And then I really don't know that there's a need for the council to be. Very engaged in some of the detail as staff can work with the applicant to say, okay, so what modifications need to be made for stormwater? What about? Um sewer, what about water, zone six versus zone seven? What does the the five year plan look like? I'm I'm happy to leave that part with staff. Uh but I do wanna hear from staff specific. Elements that the council needs to answer, but. Elements that the council needs to answer, but before the council does give answers, we also do wanna give a chance to the applicant to speak. And we, we did this intentionally, hearing staff first, so that the applicant has an opportunity to speak directly to some of those things that are being brought up by staff. We don't want the applicant to come up and say, well, we think everything's looking good, so we'll just leave it here and then have staff with a whole bunch of questions and the council say, no, based on those questions. Now we're gonna leave it. We want you to hear everything first, uh, to give you as much of an opportunity as possible to share whatever information you feel is pertinent to the council. So with, with that, Taylor, I see your lights on. Do you wanna talk to us on those questions before we uh, throw it over to Peterson?
Yeah, thank you. That'd be very appreciated. Thank you, Chair. Um, as these are land use decisions, um. More of the questions that I have, it, it sounds like dimsteez and the, the project type largely is something that the council, at least a, a large portion of it is supportive of. Are those development standards which are in the PC zone? Uh, we don't have standard PC zones, just development standards. So the setbacks, driveway lanes, uh, what the applicant proposed, are those appropriate? Would you like us to, if this comes through the planning commission, go with that? Do you wanna see those tweaked or changed? Those types of things, which really, um, there's nothing in code. It's all up to the council's discretion, beware. I would like some feedback on what you'd like us to push for.
I have a question about that, actually. With the question about the PC zone normally involving commercial that Councilmember Green brought up. Um, would a PRD zone not be appropriate for some reason? Would that be different? Is it because it's too small?
Cause it's too small. And, and we'll get into this perhaps in the next item, but right now the, the PRD is only applicable. Um, from what twenty, twenty to thirty acres, so thirty acres is the max you can use PRD. Uh, there are per- potentially other options that, that they could use, other zoning tools they could use. Um, I don't have the verbiage right in front of me, uh, but the PC zone encourages commercial, but it doesn't require it.
Right.
So.
The ordinance says should.
Yeah, should, yeah, so encouraged, yeah. Um. The other question, what is the, the Wood Ranch zone? Isn't that the, a special West Bench PC zone?
It's PCH.
Yeah.
It has a hillside overlay on it. There, there was a whole bunch that went into Wood Ranch.
If we could still use something, you know, piggyback on that, right?
Right.
All right, are there any other questions for staff or comments from staff before we hear from Peterson?
Did, ju- it sounds low, i- if, if the council is amiable to this density. In general layout, we can, we can work on the details, setbacks and things like that, obviously, and. Just for everybody's certification, if this does go forward, or eh, as it goes forward. Um, it would go, of course, it went to the DRC already, um, but it'll go to the planning commission for formal recommendation. And then it would come back to the city council for definitely more discussion and review of any master development plan, master development agreement. But it also sounds like, though, that. As it comes back to the council, you'll want to see great detail as far as who pays for what, who maintains what. Things like that, correct? Yes, okay.
Councilmember Blim hit her light, Councilmember Green raises hand, and then Councilmember Whitelock hit her light.
Yes, sorry, I had to hear better. I turned my mic back off. Um, as far as the quote, high density residential, I agree with Kelvin. I don't think that is classified as identity and I would like to see that kinda worded, so we're not scaring people. Um, so it's more accurate description of that property, um, but that's my only feedback to staff right now when it comes to this.
That just came from the definition that current general plan. Councilmember Green.
Um, just one last comment from me is that. There's obviously, based on what uh, Scott and Grant, what Mr. Davenport, Mr. Langford said, is, is there some infrastructure issues there? I am willing to look at, because the infrastructure issues are, are what we have to get. I- in, if we do, no matter what project we're gonna put on that seventy-five acres property. The infrastructure has got to be done right. And so, um. I will just throw that, I, I will just throw that, this out there because of uh, neighborhood two doors down. But I would not be, um. I would, I would be open to consider um, a public infrastructure district. If it meant getting the infrastructure right, uh, for that area. And so I will just throw that out as a, as a possible suggestion. Um, if that, if that's what we need to do to get the infrastructure right, no matter what development goes in in that area. Uh, I think that, that it, we, we ought to be open to look at that. Thank you.
Okay, um, as far as setbacks and stuff, I, twenty-two foot driveways. I just strongly feel you need a twenty-two foot driveway, eh. You're in Utah, people drive trucks, they drive big vehicles and they hang over the sidewalks. And it makes it an unsafe community. So when you ask about setbacks, that one I care about and I think it's really important for safety reasons. And, and I, I am concerned about if the only way to access those cottage homes is via a driveway that four to six homes are sharing. That seems a little, a little scary to me when you can have a teenage driver pulling in and a five-year-old walking up a driveway. Nor a drunk driver, it's not a good combination. So I would like to also see some way to access their homes besides driving, blocking up the driveway.
All right, Mr. Lee, I noticed your lights up.
Yes, thank you. I gotta tell you, I'm confused. Um, my whole tenure here, I, I have been under the impression that, um. Farthest up on the hill, highest up on the hill in our city is where we assume the largest lots, the largest homes. It's what we assumed in Jones Ranch, it's what we assumed at the farthest west edge of Wood Ranch. Uh, the Sycamores, that's where the largest lots are. Our infrastructure is set up and structured that way. That's the tip end of all of our infrastructure. Stormwater, water, wastewater and transportation. Uh, so. You're the land use authority, um, layout density is your purview, but you just wanna, I just wanna make sure you understand. This is a fair departure from what I thought kind of was the broad brush stroke of the general plan. And it will require not only um, an MDA to uh, have the developers bear a significant portion of those. Infrastructure costs, but it'll also require us to, to relook at the master plans, because our master plans have been built on. Kind of that broad assumption that as you go further away from the core of our infrastructure, the density decreases.
All right, I'm not seeing any other questions or lights, so we'll give uh, Peterson a chance to um. Elaborate on what's been provided to the council and respond to some of the comments that have been brought up.
Thank you. Uh, do I need to do the whole thing where I read my name and my address? Was that more to send a public hearing? Uh, Barrett Peterson, great to be with all of you. Uh, I'm here with Jeff Seaman and Kalen Nichols. We also have Thomas Romney from Focus Engineering and I'd like to. Give him a little bit of time to talk about infrastructure. He'll give you some perspective to go along with Greg's perspective. Uh, let me just start, um, on a personal note, I don't do this very often, but I wanna thank each member of the council for reaching out to me. Um, after my father, excuse me, after my brother passed away recently. Uh, I do appreciate that and as you all know, my brother Ryan passed um, in an accident a couple of months ago. And he worked at Peterson Development along with Jesslin and myself. Other times my brother Brandon's worked there and my, my dad, so. Uh, it's a family business and uh, you know, we've been out here in West Jordan. Before I go into that, just wanted to thank each one of you. And I will say your staff, probably six or seven or eight staff members reached out to me individually. And I think it speaks to the quality of people that you are and the people that you have here working in your city. So I, I just wanted to make uh, the, I hate to make that a personal note, but I, I, I felt like this was the right form to do that. My dad, who's also no longer around, uh, he came out here probably back in the nineteen nineties and started doing development and I think we've probably. Improved three thousand, there's more, more and more lots out here and um, a lot of commercial development and homes. And we're proud of what we've done out here, so I hope our reputation precedes us. Uh, you've heard me talk about Home Depot and how excited we are. I was on site yesterday. Uh, if you haven't been out there, go and see the, the roof, the structure that they're putting on. Things are flying out there and they, they hope to be done by um. Late October, so uh, so it's exciting what's going on in the city. To, to touch now on this, transition to this uh, application, uh, as Scott mentioned, Scott Langford. This has been in the works for over a year and a half, this rezon process. This is just kinda what goes into it, especially when. You're on the edge of the city and there's still a lot of in- infrastructure that needs to be discussed, so. We're, we're very well aware of that and we wanna address that this evening. Uh, we're coming, asking about a planned community zone, uh, a, a couple of reasons for that. We've done a number of planned communities in your city. In fact, uh, Stone Creek where Caitlin lives, you can speak to that, and that's been going for a long time, back all the way to nineteen ninety-seven. And as I remember it, it's before my time at the company, my dad told me that the city basically said, hey, we'd love to do something different out here rather than just. The typical R one eight lots or R one six or R one ten. Let's do something where you have a variety of uses. And I think creativity and flexibility were some, words the Councilmember McConaughey used. So we're here to bring forward a uh, a community that can be creative, can be imaginative. Uh, I think this idea of um, commercial may not fit in this exact PC, I, I think it's encouraged. But we are asking for a, a slight uh, deviation from how you normally do things, but we think it's the right place for a planned community. So we've done that in Stone Creek and we've done that in the Highlands. Those are bigger pieces of the property, but we'd like to take that same approach here. So just wanted to touch on that briefly and uh, just tell you that, yeah, we're, we're, we're well aware of the soils issues. The gravel pit nature of it, uh, this seller, the Jones family, Ron Jones, Randy, uh, Gan, Craig. We've dealt with multiple times before in South Jordan and uh, we have a contract that will take place over a, a long period of time and. They understand that we need to make sure we have water and we have these uh, infrastructure in place before we take down the different portions of the land. So we've structured, structured it in a way that makes sense, the, the contract with this family. Uh, I think our proposal is reasonable at five three point three units to the acre. We, we all know that we need rooftops to support the commercial down there at fifty-six and seventy-eight. And uh, we think this is a good place to put this type of residential development. Jeff and Kalen, and maybe before I turn it over to Jeff and Kalen, um, I'll let Thomas come up and talk about infrastructure. One, one quick plug I'll make about Kalen, she'll be one of the last ones to speak before maybe I come up and answer any last questions. Kalen's a West Orange city resident, she's a planner, her fingerprints are all over this plan and she knows what good planning is and she's best and she's a resident out here. So she's always kinda checking us and saying, look, this is, this is what I would like to see if I lived in this community. Because she lives a couple of blocks to the east, so maybe more than a couple of blocks, but about a mile to the east over in Stone Creek. So thank you for your time, uh, turn the time over to Thomas and he can talk uh, infrastructure and then to Jeff and Kalen.
Hi, my name is Tom, I'm with Focus Engineering. So we've been working with the Petersons for the last year. We've worked on several other developments in West Jordan. Um, so just maybe to add to what Greg said was, this project does already have some. Infrastructure plan for it and obviously we're adding on to that and we understand that that takes time. So in all of our analysis, we understand that, you know, four hundred units aren't gonna be built in the next two years, that. And nothing's gonna be built similar to like in zone seven until the infrastructure is there. So when it comes to water and sewer. We're working with the staff, we've worked with the staff on other projects. We bring in water and sewer experts beyond just our firm. And these are firms that the city typically works with to do the analysis and to do the reports. Um, Greg's given us some feedback for those programs and we need to coordinate that to make sure that. We all have an understanding of what infrastructure needs to be put into place, so then we can put in the mechanisms needed. Whatever that is, develop, like burden by, that would be a burden to the developer in this development to make sure that those can be put into place. But obviously, no homes are gonna be built until that infrastructure is in place. Obviously, we take seriously prior to what happened in Dr- in Draper, but that's, you know, reinvigorated. The issue with slope stability and geotechnical and so we'll have experts related to geotechnical involved in this. We already have a geotechnical report. The gravel pit off, operation is a concern. But at the same time, we're working with the people who are managing that gravel pit and working with experts to make sure that this plan incorporates that. Which I think, you know, somebody brought up, which is a reason why this, in our mind, makes sense is. With the uniqueness of the slopes, it's gonna be, in our opinion, more difficult to put. A traditional neighborhood where you can't be as creative and so that's what we liked about this plan. But when it comes to infrastructure, it's mostly, you know, us as consultant professionals working with your city staff to make sure that the development functions and that. Um, we don't have issues that you've been seeing in the news, so. And I guess I'm happy to answer any questions, but you know, I think when we've talked to staff recently, it's, we need to get your opinion. To know, you know, if this is the direction we're gonna go, then it's gonna be a lot more work as we're working with them to make sure that the infrastructure can be provided.
As I say, if, if you wanna chime in, go for it. I was just gonna ask kind of more. I- i- if you can frame exactly what opinions do you want, you're gonna get seven, well, maybe fourteen or twenty-one different opinions. Uh, specifically, what would you like to hear from us on? I mean, obviously, this is just a work session. We're not taking any formal votes. We're just providing our initial kind of gut reaction. But what specific elements would you like us to weigh in on that would make it a little bit easier for you as you're trying to move this design forward?
I wanted to touch on something that Pamela mentioned, is, is finding the balance. Um, I mean, we tried to, to present a, a project that.
Real, real quick, because we do have one council member on line, if you can make sure to speak directly, because they're directional mics, so if you speak a little from the side, they'll get to nothing.
Gotcha, gotcha. Um, what I wanted to say is, is based on what Pamela said, is finding the right balance. We, we wanted to come with a project that we're not overloading you initially with some crazy number of density. Um, but we also understand the economics of this situation and, and finding and remedying and mediating the soil issues. And still having a project that pencils, um, enough that, that we're able to, to help with the infrastructure and do what we need to there. I think we're, we're more than willing to open up the developer agreement to, to work on developing and building. When water and sewer and everything is available, we're happy to do that. Um, we've tried to do this the right way. Um, talking to staff, going to council, talking with you individually and, and then we're also opening, open to having a neighborhood meeting. Which, which we plan to do sometime in July. So, I mean, we're trying to do this the right way. We understand that, eh, the uh, politics of it, we understand the infrastructure of it and, and just leave it there, so. If you wanna say anything.
And I think you're looking for what, what do we want out of this meeting? We want to know generally if we should move forward, um. Our next step, we've, we've done a year and a half worth of work on this property. And if it goes to council and gets shot down for something we've already discussed, we'd like to know if, if we're, if we're hitting a wall. If we're on the right track, if there's a lot of things we can amend and make better and improve, like the length of the parking stalls or. Or sidewalk access to the carriage homes. And those are all things that we've taken note of from discussing these things with you guys and we can improve. All the details and, and make this a fantastic plan, but we wanna know if, if we come before you as a council, as a voting council. If we'll be able to move forward with having a year and a half already behind us and many years probably ahead of us to get this thing across the finish line, so.
Start with Councilmember Worthen.
Um, so someone that has lived out there, myself, knowing the neighborhoods and the areas, um, I think really the next step that I would like to hear is feedback. From the people that live out there, um, really get their thoughts, because, I mean, we represent people. I mean, I, that's not my district, but I still represent all the people when I think of something that needs to go in anywhere in the city. I wanna know what they think first. So, um, I have talked to, as you know, some of the neighbors that live out there and. Um, they're very much looking forward to hearing from you and having a town hall and giving their feedback, so that's, that was, that would be my next step before I tell you do anything else is. I'd love to see that meeting go on. I'd love to attend out and, and really hear what they have to say when they see your plans, cause. It's the people that live there, that's what's important to me, is what they think and what they would like in their neighborhoods.
Not seen any of the lights yet, so I'll start rambling. Um. First, I want to hit on what Mr. Lee uh mentioned because I know that's. Uh something that I've brought up a number of times, so I very much appreciate the listening. Um this one's a little bit different for me in that. They're trying to build on top of the gravel pit and looking at, okay, no neighbors to the west, no neighbors to the south. We do have some existing homes on the north and on the east. Is this better than an operating gravel pit or even a vacant gravel pits? Um looking at the topography, I'm looking at, I'm thinking about a need for flexibility and creativity. Um and knowing that since it is on top of a. A former, soon to be former industrial site, there's going to be some flexibility that's needed. Um I didn't balk too much at it because of the density that was given, uh five point, I can't remember, units per acre, five point three. Five point four, five point three, five point four, five point something units per acre. If you were. Honestly, I I prefer a little bit less, but I'm also looking at the topography, realizing that, okay, with this, we do have a fair amount of open space. Um that's putting things closer. I what when we're looking at the the proposed setbacks. What was it? Eight feet on one lot and then five on the adjoining, thinking, oh, wow, that's just twelve feet between the two. Like that 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 seems really, really tight. But at the same time, this is a new subdivision. You're not right up against. Like you're not immediately next to somebody. You did in the uh concept plan kind of. Space things out a little bit. So you look like you're trying to match the neighborhood to the north and neighborhood to the east. So those who did buy something that that was that type, they would know what they're getting into. Uh kind of like council member Jacob said earlier, I don't think. I I think we should let the buyers dictate what they want rather than us dictate what they should have the opportunity to purchase and where you're. In a relatively new subdivision, a relatively new area that doesn't have too much next to it. I I'm not as worried about that. Um but but that was kind of my general thought with with this one. Then when you get into some of the specifics. Councilmember White Lock, councilmember Worthen noting the number of homes that would potentially be attached to the driveway. Um as a parent of five little kids, all on the spectrum, ages nine, seven, five, five, three. Yeah, that would be a concern. One or two neighbors I can work with if I'm having to juggle five neighbors. That 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 seems a bit much. I. Yeah. I also appreciate councilmember Whitelock's comment about having an opportunity to get to transportation other than walking through the driveway, making sure that there are sidewalks that. Separate pedestrians from potential traffic. With that, I've seen a couple of other lights go on, but those were my initial impressions. Um the last thing I already hit on. Infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. I'm sure that can all be worked out. We're not engineers. But we have some very good ones that work for the city and as long as they, at the end of the day, feel comfortable saying, yes, this is how it will be done. And our finance team says, yes, the cost for the initial for the incremental development will be borne by the development. Uh I I could see myself being supportive. I mean, infrastructure's got to be there and it's got to be done right. So. With that, I think councilmember Bloom was next with her light.
Appreciate it. Uh and councilmember Berlin took those out of my mouth. I am. I'm excited to work, but I look forward to what the neighbors have to say and their input because. We've been surprised by some really great ideas and insight from neighbors over the years, as you have. I'm sure I'm looking forward to that. Um I do appreciate and I have and I and I just want to give a shout out to you guys for how much you guys do listen and how much you not just listen to. To current projects, but you listen to what happens with other projects in the city with other developers and you hear that feedback and you take that into account. And that means a lot because it really shows that you're willing to work with us and really find that balance so that we do. Find a really fantastic um neighborhood. Years down the road that people are going to appreciate. So I just want to say thank you for that. Um. So what I look forward to is the feedback from the neighbors, the continued feedback between staff regarding that infrastructure. And it's solid plans so that everybody's on the same page going forth. And and if anything, heaven forbid, happens, we know we're on the same page. Because you have skin in the game for the for for generations to come in this city and we want to continue working together. So.
Councilmember Pat? Great, thank you, Chair. Um I've been able to converse with the developers and also staff just regarding some questions that I had regarding the utilities. And the slope and the proximity from the other developments. Um similar to councilmember Bloom, I like the general concept plan. The location is the. The tough spot, it seems, um while also noting that Peterson has a great track record of wanting to integrate into the community appropriately. Well stated for reaching out and giving as much information as possible upon which to base the a good plan. And I I see what you mean, uh Mr. Lee, in terms of more. Opulent homes as you approach the west bench, while also noting that we have thousands of homes already approved. On the west side um in various uh various developments already slated. I I do appreciate the information from Mr. Campos, Mr. Langford, Mr. Davenport, because. Trying to figure out what the developer wants versus what we are able to deliver at this point. But that's the this the sticky wicket. They're trying to make sure that that intersection is appropriate. As uh councilmember Jacob and I have had uh the Google Maps app, you're seeing a seventy two feet between your driveway. Councilmember Jacob and the proposed driveway is thirty feet. Well stated, councilmember Whitelock, I agree. I know that uh councilman Green and I have talked about this too, having enough room to have larger trucks be parked. But when you have a shared driveway, it can mitigate that if it's done correctly. Um but going down to thirty feet could be problematic, but I don't want to steal your thunder. Councilmember Jacob, if you had something you wanted to say regarding that.
Yeah, I'll just I'll just mention um in the in my part of the Maples, it's uh. It's seventy two feet between the two houses that face each other and the carriage homes. The garages are set back from the front of the house. Remember the old WSPA that used to. Really encourage that garage set back from the front door. And so it's five or six feet further back from the front of the house. And I have enough room. In at my house that I can park my car. In front of my garage. I don't, I park in the garage, but I can park in front of the garage and that's a visitor parking spot. So that's a spot that, you know, my dad parks out when he comes over. And my neighbors directly facing me can park a car in their driveway at the same. Time and yet everybody can still get in and out. Now, the. Maples that are a little further down the hill, uh some mine were built by Hamlet, the ones that were built by Richmond, uh a little further down the hill, they are thirty feet apart. Uh on the driveways, but they cannot park in their driveways. They don't have any guest parking in their driveway. So you've got to have more guest parking. Outside of the driveways. Um I suppose if I had my druthers and I was going to tell you go back and repencil it, you know, since we're early in the process. Or early in quotes in the process, um I would say take out about a fourth to a third of the carriage home and just stretch those out. Just a little bit and just just give them a little more elbow room in between the houses, just for vehicular mobility. As long as you have a a curb and driveway going into them, like a gutter with a curb cut, you know. Um I don't worry about kids playing in the driveways and teenage drivers, because the guests will down to get into the driveway. They just they just do. It's never been a problem in my neighborhood. Teenage drivers on the street coming around the corner, that well, that's always a problem. And that's a problem in my neighborhood, but I'll talk to the police chief about that. So so, yeah, you either got to have more parking or just a little more elbow room in those in those houses too. And I I know, like, we're not in the nitty gritty detail of parking on this one yet. But we'll we'll get there. A little more grass, a little more, just a little more breathing space in between the houses would be good. It's not, I I like the idea of the carriage houses. I. When we moved to West Jordan, we were looking at Daybreak. Uh Daybreak was brand new. And uh we were out looking at Daybreak and they've got all kinds of clever little. You know, alley fed houses and shared front lawns and all this random stuff that is just different. And we came into these carriage homes. And uh and so, yeah, it's. Kind of the same kind of idea. It's a different, it's it's different. It's, you know, somebody who's who's worried about. You know, not having that enclosed backyard to play in or whatever, whatever the issue is, isn't going to buy that house. Right? They're not going to buy a townhouse. They're not going to live in an apartment. They're going to buy, they're going to go find their single family house. So I'm 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 okay with letting the market kind of determine who buys what. We're not forcing anybody into anything. So. Um but yeah, just a little more elbow room. That's what I was saying. Sorry to, I I I took your mic way more than I planned.
All right. Can I just make a quick comment? Please. Um yeah, thanks for uh Jeff and Caitlin answered the question well, but what we're looking for is feedback and you're giving us that and. Making sure we're not hitting a brick wall, I think, as Caitlin put it. Uh something that has not been talked about too much is the balance of housing. Jeff always reminds me of the the integrated housing planet uh that the city has that I should know a little bit better than I do, but. What I what I do know is I don't know how low two units to the acre is going to sell over the next twenty years. I mean, that's. Million, million and a half dollar homes if you just do two units to the acre and. Maybe that's what the council wants. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but we're saying we need to have a place where people can live at different stages of life. That's one of the beauties of Stone Creek. Caitlin lives in Stone Creek. You can, and she's moved, I think this is your second home in there, if I'm not mistaken. But that was the vision of Stone Creek is you can live in a neighborhood at different stages of life. So. I'm not trying to be contrarian here, but that's that's kind of our vision is there should be a blend of housing. And then Caitlin, I I wanted to get the chance to um respond to the parking. Comment about how, you know, we are meeting our exceeding code on that, but all the comments about parking and alleyways and connectivity, we're we're going to listen. Thomas is here. Caitlin will give us some good ideas on how to address that, carriage homes maybe being a little too tight. But Caitlin, can you just speak to that narrow issue of parking?
So in all of our single family homes, we have that seam setback, that five foot to the garage setback. That's our standard. So we will have that extra space for the parking in those driveways. And then in the townhomes, we have a twenty two foot driveway in all the homes, every single one of them cottages. The carriage, the single family and the towns all have two car garages. So they've got their parking for those units. But we are trying to put in extra guest parking in that driveway and the townhomes have met that. Um we're going to be a little creative with the carriages and figure out how to get pedestrian walkways in there so that they're safe and they. They look good. Having a walkway either on the side or behind is going to be a little funky. So we'll be creative, you know, looking at that. But I'm I just wanted to point out that the carriage homes do have two car garages. Plus, there's one on the alley that's a guest and it would have to be marked clearly like the DRC said. That it would have to be marked and enforced that it's only guests and not your your son parking there every night. But yeah, we're we're going to be creative and looking for other ways to park and add additional parking to the site, so it's not a problem.
Don't exceed the code.
Yeah, as as far as single family, I mean, it's a single family cluster. And single family is only required to have a two car garage and there's no guest parking required. But in this in this situation, in this, we can see that they do need guest parking stalls, of course. Um so we're we're looking into that and we'll we'll definitely address the parking issue. Any other questions?
I'm not seeing any other questions, any lights or any hands raised. Um anything from staff? Scott, Greg, Corbin, anything else that you want to bring up or have the council chime in on?
So the real question we wanted to know is staff is is the majority of you comfortable with this? Density level that we should spend more staff time working with Peterson Development on the concept and the proposals?
So straw poll on that? No.
Sorry, rephrase the question or repeat the question. Sorry, I was. Looking at the map.
I'm I guess I where I'm at is I I'd like to do that neighborhood meeting. I mean. Before I give any opinion, because it's it's not my opinion, it's theirs. So that's really what I'd want to hear. I mean, personally, if it was my opinion, I like what you have, but. It's not my opinion, it's there. And so I'd really like to get the feedback from the neighbors. So that's kind of where I'm at. So I'm going to hold.
And I'm with Melissa. I would want to know what the community that surrounds it has to say. But I also, it's a higher density than any of the others that we've approved, four point nine, I think is the highest we've approved, so. And I've already mentioned that to some of them, so they already have heard that. So it's not a big surprise. It's 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 a little more dense than I'm comfortable with. I understand that that's a unique place to have to build on and that it, you know. Probably requires more density for it to pencil out, but. It's a little too dense currently. If we could have a little more usable green space, a little more places for people to park because. I don't know who's going to enforce all of this, but. That's also a concern actually I have. I don't know if you have that answer yet because so when. People are parking in all the wrong places. Who who comes? I've never lived in an HOA. I will never live in an HOA. But who comes? Who comes and enforces that? At at Daybreak, they tell me that they do, but. People that live there tell me they don't. So how does that? How does that work if I'm living in there and it's those carriage homes? And councilmember Jacobs living in one and. The day that my family comes is the same day his family comes and the same day. Helen's family comes and now I can't get out because there's so many cars parked everywhere. How is that handled? What I'm really getting at, gentlemen, is then does this become a police issue and then that costs more money?
I'll take a stab at answering that. I think you you do your best through the CCNRs and through the HOA to enforce that. And it's a problem that's up and down the Los Etch front, right? Whether it's, I mean, parking. Is a problem and you're these same conversations we're having here in West Jordan and in South Jordan where we're developing and in Heber. You do the best you can. We try to meet the code and exceed the code. And you know, I I love the comments about trucks. You know, I thought we were going towards E E vehicles and. But we're, yeah, we're trying to accommodate the twenty two foot trucks, even though.
Oh, they make E trucks. They're making.
No, I I know. I'm just saying, you try to satisfy a lot of masters, right? I mean, we're trying to satisfy council, neighbors and. You do the best you can, I guess, is my short answer, and we will try to address it through uh CCNRs and HOA enforcement. But uh but yeah, it's not a problem that's unique to to this subdivision or many others, but but we will, we we're listening to you on parking and. Green space and we're going to make some attempts to to modify the plan to, you know, to get your support, obviously.
Thank you.
So thank you. And looking at electric trucks, Edison Motors has an awesome hybrid um semi, basically. Would love to see that fit in the drive. We'll go to councilmember Green.
If I can get off mute. Uh the the question was asked, am I okay with the density of that particular project? That the the current density of the project is five point three units per acre. The development that we approved immediately to the south, if I recall right, and and Mr. Langford can scream and yell if I'm wrong. Uh but Jones Run Jones Ranch or wherever it's called, we approved that and that was five point two units per acre. This is not out of line with what we've already approved on that site that's that's going to border it. So. Uh and that then the neighborhood to the north, I I don't know what the density is there. I imagine it's someplace right around. Uh four point eight, four point nine. So this is not substantially. Outside the realm of what would uh what we have already approved. And so with the density, am I okay with the actual density? Yeah, because it's got some uh good open space and I think that they're going to be able to tie the trails in to uh. To help with uh uh Joan, the the trails at Jones Ranch and eventually I think some of those trails will tie in around the backside and go to. Uh to Wood Ranch. So. The the. I think if we do this right, the five points, but the end of the day, the five point three doesn't bother me. Um the five point three doesn't bother me.
Send a couple of other heads nodding.
I'm okay. I don't, the five point three doesn't bother me as far as moving forward with stuff.
Councilmember Pat, uh thank you. That was the last portion of what I was going to mention when I was confering with councilmember Jacob and we were. Back and forth on the mic is that it seems that the. New model of housing, as I go to American Planning Association conferences and read up and see that the trends in real estate. It 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 isn't that larger lot, larger home on the hill so much as. More affordable housing that it's easier to maintain. That doesn't cost as much on utilities and watering the lawn where we can conserve. And that that seems to be the trend. Of course, there are those that might want a larger lot and we still have provision for that. But in terms of. Adjacent lot size, five point three, five point two, it seems not out of kilter with what's already been approved. Um and it still maintains space on the west side closer to the bench if we do want to approve uh larger lots. But that does become an issue with the topog. Do want to approve uh larger lots, but that does become a issue with the topography as well with the slope and grading, so. So no problem here regarding that density. Uh, well stated, to always reach out for community inputs since we represent the community, since you're soliciting our personal feedback at this point. Just wanted to give that to you, thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I, I'm curious what might come from the community meeting, but at the same time, looking at the development. The proposed area, you have residents on the north side that are on the other side of eighty-two hundred south. And then on Stokesy, half of what's there, so you've got. The full west side that is completely uninhabited and the full south side that has an approved development, but um. This is west of U one eleven, so you you don't have anything out there at all. And on the eastern side, the the bottom half again i- is vacant, so it's. It, it's still pretty isolated and that's probably why some of the issues with infrastructure um. If you zoom out on Google Maps, there's like a little peninsula right here that kind of sticks out in the middle of nowhere, so it's not quite like. Leapfrog development, but it's, it's pretty isolated, you can't get any further west than that, it's just. So, so I'm really curious to see what kind of feedbacks received. Also, given the current neighbor of the gravel pit, I'm curious to see perception, so. I don't see any other lights, I don't see any other hand raise, hands raised, I'm not.
Chris, uh, just one last comment. If we, if we decide that we wanna do that. Uh, we have to keep in mind that there is a piece of property that will need to annex in.
Yep, good, good point, good point.
Uh, I have one, one more uh quick question for you guys. If everything went swimmingly. When do you think the first house would go up?
Thomas, uh, I'm gonna look at Thomas as I say this, but uh, I mean, I. I'm a realist, I I can see it being a couple of years before we get our ho- first house, maybe next year. I'd like it to be next year, but I can see it being two years and Thomas, uh, I'm gonna lean over to you and see what you think.
So because the general plan does include a certain amount of units, which is around a hundred to a hundred and thirty or forty sewer and water are different. Because of that, there is infrastructure already in place or getting put into place, there's a tank being built. If we were here two years ago, the, my answer would be different, because even though the general plan plans for things, it doesn't mean the infrastructure is always there. But based off of, you know, what I know, the infrastructure to be there or being there soon. Prior to us being able to actually get through this whole process. Of, you know, general plan amendment and preliminary and final and just what it takes to get to there and to get things built and to get a home out there. There is enough already there to move forward pretty swiftly to get the first hundred homes out there. To where could we have, uh, we wouldn't have a home built by next spring, I think. By the spring of twenty twenty-five, it would be very reasonable to have homes in this neighborhood.
And, and the last goal, if everything went perfectly.
I, I, if everything went perfectly, there's too many variables to count, I think.
Right.
And yet we have a contract with the seller over a period of years and a lot of provisions that say we need to work through water issues and sewer issues and. But I mean, the contract goes for seven or eight years, just to give you that idea, so we're, we're trying to be very conservative and. Great give a outlook of all the things that still need to happen, while I'm, I'm a believer that problems get solved, we put our heads together, we staff funding comes. Or the developer pays for it, or there's a PID, there's all these different options, I don't have a clear roadmap for it on every single one of those things, but this is. Real estate development, I mean, it's, and how it, it's how it always has happened.
I, I appreciate that totally, and I just want, I just wanted to get that out there, that like a realistic development, people look at a four hundred unit development and think. I've got a four-year-old, I don't want four hundred homes behind my house, well, by the time you have four hundred homes behind your house, you're gonna have an eighteen-year-old. You, you know, don't worry quite so much, I, I just, it's, it's just sometimes. People have a hard time realizing that these things take a lot of time and nothing happens, you know, you can't just water the soil and and plant a house seed and. Al- although sometimes it seems like that's what happens. Um, that it does take time and these things will get sorted out and these things will, you know. Infrastructure will go in and things have to happen, like I said, you're not gonna build a house without water. And it's like, whoa, I'm sorry, I'm gonna approve your development because there's no water, well, right. You gotta have water, duh, I mean, okay. So I just wanted to get that out there, ju- just that, you know, it it's gonna take some time and it's gonna take some development and you guys are aware of that. And our staff is aware of that and. And again, you, this is why you guys get the big bucks, is you're the risk takers and you get. You, you know, you're putting yourselves out there, so appreciate that.
I'm debating whether to chime in on this, but just from ju- just. A layman's guess at timeline, knowing Drively Highlands, we worked on utilities for that for about two years. Then they're able to get permits, then you're looking at another two hundred and seventy-ish days to build, so that was about three years. We're looking at Wood Ranch with all the topography and everything, we approved that one, what was it, three years ago and we're not. We, how many permits, building permits have we issued for Wood Ranch? Zero, zero. So. Anyway, um, we'll take that with a grain of salt, knowing the significance of the utility and infrastructure again, that was. Perfect world scenario, if everything were ready to go, perfect, no supply chain issues, no financing issues, no. Finding land on which to build water tanks issues. Anyway, if there's nothing else for this one, I'll give up one last opportunity for staff, Peterson, council.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for coming, it's been nice having this opportunity in a less formal setting to kind of. Bounce ideas around so you can get a little bit of a feel for where we're at, we know you've invested a lot of time so far and we wanna make sure that what. What ends up uh being built is something that'll be a, a gem within the city, so thank you for taking time to hear our thoughts and. Um, look forward to hearing more soon. Thank you.
All right, so our next item is a potential amendment to Title thirteen dash five C Plan Development Zone and. Potentially Title thirteen dash five B three residential lot and bulk standards and do we have a slide for this one that? Gives me a cheat sheet saying who's gonna speak to this? Scott?
Thank you, um. I, I'm happy to take the lead to uh, i- if uh council member Whitelock or council member Bloom wants to speak to this as well. Um, really, there's a, 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 they're urging that we've, we've delved into potentially changing. Our, our planned residential development zone, our PRD zone. Um, that was actually back in, in March, uh, when the, this committee of the whole uh talked about this, this broader issue. Um, from that meeting, you can see on the RCA, I have a little bit of timeline, but uh, we met on May first um. With council staff, a few mayor's staff, uh, with council member Whitelock and vice chair Bloom to talk about. Potential drafts to what this might look like and. Uh, on, on page one of your RCA, I listed three things that that I took away and which we. We tried to encapsulate into these drafts attached to your reports, the first was that. Part of the initial discussion also drifted into the, the discussion of a road design, road width and things like that and so. Um, that in and of itself can be pretty complex and and pretty specific. And I know that Mr. Gallo, our city traffic engineer, is hard at work at looking at road design standards and. And traffic calming issues and things like that, so we tried to decouple. That issue with any potential changes to our PRD zone, which is in Title thirteen instead of our, our engineering standards, and so that was, that was the first takeaway. Uh, number two, it seemed like one of the main reasons why um. This came up as a discussion was, was the concern that actually was brought up in the, of this last, uh, this last item, which was driveway length. And uh. Actually, in preparation for tonight's meeting, yesterday after work, I went driving through a different, several different communities that have townhomes. And apartments and things like that, and I was, it, it was a good visual, I should have taken pictures, but. I- it, it was a good reminder that a lot of, a lot of people um. Living in these communities drive larger vehicles. They, they simply do, a lot of construction workers and, and so. A- yeah, as we, as we, as this uh ad hoc committee talked about what is the potential good number to rest on. Uh, twenty-two feet was, was what we determined is, is a good average size. Uh, double cab pickup or SUV and um. And so, uh, we, we can point to several different examples in our community where driveway lengths were, were less than that and it's hard to. Park a Honda Civic, uh, and, and we, we have issues with people running into bumpers and hitches and things like that and so. Uh, that's why you see on, on item number, or, yeah, item number two there uh on the RCA that um. That's, that's the number that we settled on, as we talked about that, uh. As, as it relates specifically to our PRD zone, we were talking about other residential zones that we've got in the city. And it, it was actually good in, in, in respect that. Our normal R one zones are R one eight, R one six, R one ten, they driveway lengths are dictated by front setbacks. And that, that's just an easy way to, to. Um, to figure out how long a driveway is going to be, so. Um, there's no, the, with one exception, there's nothing less than twenty-two feet, the only exception, and it's been in our code for. Well, fifteen plus years since I've worked here. We, we do allow for a front yard. Um, setback to be reduced if a home is located on a cul-de-sac or, or a knuckle on, on a bend of the road. And that's simply to accommodate the unique geometry and shape of lots that are typically put. On a cul-de-sac, you know, you got the pie wedge-shaped lot. And so we actually allow for a front yard setback of twenty feet. In, in our residential zones and you'll see that, I think it's attachment three on your RCA. So, um, with that, um, could we just make it uniform twenty-two feet, minimum of twenty-two feet across the board? Certainly, if the council wants to do that. Um, it would put a number of our existing homes into a legal non-conforming status and we would have to be. Pretty articulate in, in our, in our uh letters that we sent to financial. Institutions for refinancing and things like that, that does matter if, if they seek, yeah, go ahead.
Do we have to be as articulate for other legal non-conforming elements like downward sloping driveways?
Well, the zoning administrator, I don't know if you've ever issued a, a letter uh about that. We no longer allow for downward sloping driveways. Gratefully, Chairman Kanae, gratefully, our code is pretty good a- a- addressing legal non-conforming uses. And so a- as I worked through potential verbiage here with our attorney's office, uh, Mr. Murray and I. While there, there is some extra work that may need to go into explaining legal non-conforming issues. Um, he wasn't very concerned about that, uh, so. Anyway, third item that I just wanted to call your attention to, um. Really, the other, the other efforts that you'll see in, in drafting a potential amendment is to make. The PRD and the PC zone, the planned community zone, more congruent and uniform. In other words, if you look at our PRD zone today, there's a lot of. There's a very loose framework, it gives the, the council a lot of discretion, it's as approved by the MVA, I mean. The PRD zone basically could be as approved by the council, that, I mean, that could be. That, that is the PRD uh zone in a nutshell. The PC zone is a lot like that, we just heard uh Peterson Development, they're trying to use that zoning tool. But the PC zone does actually have some baseline standards, for example, the PC zone. Actually calls out minimum driveway length twenty-two feet, and so that is in the code right now for our PC zones. The PRD does not have that language. Um, and then one of the other. Bits of conversation back to the March meeting was, uh, I think there was some, some uh council discussion about. Um, whether or not to allow the council the discretion to allow for um. A uh, a PRD under uh ten acres in size. Uh, harking back to the well-bewest, that was one exception that was, was granted in, in that. Uh, particular development, so I'm here to answer any questions. Uh, I'm, I'll be as nimble as, as you, as you need me to be and, and address any concerns uh that I may not have addressed. Uh, from council member Whitelock or Bloom, and I'm just here to support your, your policy on this.
Councilmember Whitelock, councilmember Bloom, do you wanna lead this part of the conversation or? I'd be happy to. Push questions if you'd like.
All right, so. First question here, council member Jacob, did you want to chime in or just getting ready?
Yeah, I had a question, if that's okay.
Please.
Um, the, the current code and in, and would survive the, the amendment if it were. Put up, just in the very first section, you know, you mentioned before in the last one about twenty to thirty acres. Um. Eliminating, you're eliminating that less than twenty acre appeal. Uh, idea, which is, I don't, I don't think I like, but what if, what if the last. Development that's ninety or seventy-five acres, I think it is. What if they came in and just proposed three planned residential developments, phase one, phase two and phase three, and it was three different. Planned residential developments, they just decided to subdivide it that way and build one and then build the other and then build the other, couldn't they do that? And still be within that twenty to thirty?
Hi, Will, Mr. Gergen, you wanna join me? Um. I would say no, uh, I would, although you are ultimately the land use authority, we have. I mean, that example specifically, I'm, I'm sure it'll come in in phases, but I would hope that overall master. Development agreement would, would govern the full development.
If they came in with like three different master development agreements.
Oh, I, I would say, well, under Utah state law, that is. Uh, the council has full discretion, so they could do that with your approval.
Right, I, I'm just saying that would meet the, the letter of the law, but not necessarily the spirit. Of the law, so I'm just.
But with your, with your full discretion, you determine the spirit and the letter.
Isn't that nice?
And I just, just for clarifying the record, uh, I think I'd mentioned that, that the, it was ten acres. Or, or less, it, it's actually twenty, as it currently reads, yeah.
It was twenty and you're, you're suggesting ten.
Just to widen that window a little bit, but honestly, um, it, it all depends on. It, it, it's not a very usable tool right now, um, and so that's why I, I, I struck out twenty and put ten. Um, but if we, if the council leaves the exception in there. That, that you can approve something less than twenty, I, I said, this doesn't really matter, but. It, it's, it's a policy call, uh, council member, it really is.
What would be the advantage of putting it down to ten, just ease?
It would be one less decision that the council would have to, to make, um, i- if it's already allowed. Um, as we develop out the rest of the city. Where there's not gonna be a lot of pieces of the property that are, are gonna fit between twenty and thirty acres, that's, that's very small. Um, that's a pretty unique piece of property, so I was just kind of expanding that, that's all.
So, can I say one thing, council?
Yes, and then we'll go to council member Green.
Um, so a little history on the PRD zone did, uh, used to have a minimum. It was determined by the council, but, you know, this was back when Councilman Gray was on the planning commission. Um, and the planning commissioner and council at that time felt that the PRD was not a very good infill tool. And hence, there were some projects where two or three or four acres. Um, and at that time, it was felt that's too small to be a planned residential development, hence. That's the reason that, that we established the minimum of twenty acreage. Twenty acres uh for a planned residential development is council member Jacob mentioned with the caveat. That the council does ultimately have their full discretion and they can pull, approve something smaller if they feel. Uh, you know, whatever that criteria is in ordinance, so that's just a little history, I'm not. Discounting what Mr. Langford's saying or anything like that, but that's just how we got to the point where we're at now. The ten acre is at a sweet spot between twenty and thirty acres now, it's just the numbers we landed on, so.
Councilmember Green. Sorry, Council Councilmember Green, you had your hand raised?
Oh, sorry, I have to tape myself up you. Uh I I generally like the direction. And uh where we're headed, with the exception of that ten acres. The the only, if we wanna go to ten acres, then we've gotta change the rest of the ordinance. Because the ordinance, uh the preamble, and by the way, if we're gonna change the preamble, we need to add some teeth to it. But the preamble of the PRD and PC ordinance specifically say. That the benefits are realized from a large scale project. Well, ten acres is not a large scale project. Ten acres is an infill project and we have uh we have a couple other tools. We we specifically have the infill, eh there's an infill zone. We have the integrated housing zone. Um. I personally, I'd rather get rid of the whole PRD in the in the first place. Because uh as we've seen over the course of the last six, I will just tell you over the course of the last six or seven years. We've only si- I I in my opinion, a- as far as you can probably throw it about as far as you can throw Larry Gardner's boat. Um the the I've only seen one PRD that's actually been successful in the city. Uh the PRD that's over on Redwood Road, uh Gadsden Village, not a very successful PRD. Uh there's been a couple other PRDs not very successful. The only successful PRD that's actual that that seems to have been. Successful is the Brinkerhoff Bluffs and that's because Gary Cannon got creative and used a PRD. And a senior housing overlay and actually made a very uh creative ne- neighborhood. And it seems like that one worked. Haven't had any problems in that neighborhood. And and it seems like it worked and it's got a variety, it's got a fairly um diverse group of houses. From thirds of an acre to smaller with some townhomes and and that one actually worked and that one was about eleven acres. Uh. Welby West is not gonna be a good project, uh and I I I I'm not it, but if we're going to go to ten acres. Then immediately we have to fix the preamble. Because the preamble specifically says it's for large scale projects. And if we're gonna play with the preamble, then I wanna put some teeth into the preamble. So that it we have more than just, well, this was a nice guideline and the developer doesn't have to follow any. And when they don't follow it and and they still can put in whatever kind of project they want. So if we go to ten acres. Uh we gotta fix the preamble and we've gotta put some teeth into the preamble. Or or otherwise, we just get rid of the preamble and and then just say, you know, and then decide how we're gonna. Uh do that, but that's my comment.
So I would agree with Councilmember Green that if if we go to ten, it would be good to modify that and and. And have it not just be, oh, you might, you might consider this, but more showers and less mades.
Gosh, I'm almost to the opinion that we need to go to just form based on the everywhere and just. Take each application as an application and say, is this good or is this bad and just take each one and stop putting out these arbitrary criteria. There that are, you know, ten acres, twenty acres, fifteen acres, eleven and a half. What? It's just a number. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't mean anything. It's 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 arbitrary. You can do a five acre, you could do a fifteen acre, you could, you know. Pick a number, any number. It's kinda like how many seats you wanna put in a theater. Whatever, pick a pick a number, right? It 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 could be anything. Um. So I I'm almost thinking, gosh, it's just. Chuck the whole thing, start over. As much as some of us like deleting code, I think that might be kinda fun. Um. You know, just let things kinda come up.
Zach, I would not be opposed to doing that, to tell you the honest truth.
I I just think it's a. I I just think we we keep doing this and say, well, you know, we're gonna have to go with a hundred different zones. If we're gonna put showers in every zone, we have to go with a hundred different zones for a hundred different possibilities for a hundred different persons. Because what fits in one might not fit in another. I I I'm exaggerating a little bit, but you can't get the idea. It just, it seems to me like. Like this part in the in again, this first section, we're going from twenty to ten and striking all the council discretion part. About something smaller than twenty. Um. You know, that stuff was in there for a reason, because sometimes there's a five acre, six acre, eight acre, nine acre, twelve acre, again, pick a number. Parcel where where this fits and yet the code didn't plan for it. So now we gotta change the code to make it fit this. We mentioned it on the last one, uh I think Councilmember Green was said that, well, if this doesn't fit, maybe we might have to change the ordinance to make it fit. Stop changing the ordinance. Let's just, just make the ordinance a little more. I know you guys probably are gonna like have a heart attack over that, just kinda thinking about, thinking about uh. Council having free rein, but just get just an idea. It's just let people propose what they're gonna propose. They do it anyway, right? We we've heard the future land use map. Why do we even have it if people come in and they just propose what they're gonna, because they do. Let's just.
Well, in fairness, this is also bringing this in to to match those PC zones, so we aren't doing these little pieces. Which are trying to make this so it does, we're not doing that.
Right. Yep, I know, I get it. I get it. And I get the idea behind it. For the most part, I think you're barking up the right tree. We're combining a couple of things. And kinda loosening the code in a lot of ways, which is, I think, a step in that direction, but I'm just thinking, why not just take all the steps?
Well, eh. That that's fair. Um but as you re- as you recall, some of you have been on the council where you have done away with. Like the WSPA, right? The West Side Planning Area. Um. That creates a a whole slew of of issues that Mr. Garden has to deal with as far as legal non-conforming and. And if we actually still have that in our code uh for for reference, but I don't even wanna.
No, well, well, I don't. What bothers me is we said we're gonna track ordinance, the property's been developed under. And that has happened in this city. Off thirteen hundred West, there's uh with these good performance zones. There's several performance zones. Um it generally doesn't uh cause a. Insurmountable hurdle, but it's better to keep it codified if property has been developed under and then and just not use it. And I think the instruction is Scott said of the WSPA is we that would only be developed to the four hundred nineteen acres. That contained in the Highlands, so it doesn't create a non-conforming issue in in that sense. Uh but to to take it out of the ordinance, then we still have to uh reference that to financial institutions. But by and large, most of them, what they're not, they they don't have a problem finance in the project. The only thing they're concerned about is the rebuild if it's destroyed.
Right, what I mean is for new development.
Yeah.
For new applications.
Just so just don't use it.
And and Councilmember Jacob, you you touched on the overall issue that that I see here. We're we're balancing predictability for staff, for developers versus flexibility and just. Do whatever, you know, present whatever you want. And so i- it's a balancing act, right? And and so by making some of these changes, we're we're hoping, I don't wanna speak for for the other council members. But we're hoping to present a little bit more predictability for for someone who wants to potentially use this. As a starting point, Mr. Developer, you've gotta have twenty two foot, a a minimum twenty two foot setback. And then then we can kinda negotiate from that point forward. So. I hope that there's still enough discretion in here that the council feels that they can they can approve a a a unique development, a creative development. And not lock it down in cookie cutter.
And I recognize that I'm not speaking to the application here, so to speak, you know, to the proposal. I'm kinda just throwing out an idea. As in a larger sense to be just let 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 it ruminate, cuz you never know, in six months, we're gonna have a completely different council. Who knows what what's gonna be. Proposed, right? So.
Well, and and Councilmember Jacob, you're not far off. I think our I think our friends to the north in Taylorsville. They actually have a couple of zones and that we may wanna look at that, that really they they have a. Uh for lack of a better term, they ha- they ca- I think they call it actually in Taylorsville. I think they call it a flex zone. And they have a flex residential and a flex commercial and really with like what Scott is saying. You start with a twenty two foot driveway and a couple other basic standards and then everything else is negotiated. By um MDA and MDP and really that's what we're almost doing here with the PRD. But I I I'm okay with modifying the PRD, but I I I am, I am okay looking towards the future. Uh for what you're actually talking about is uh having a couple of basic standards and letting somebody come in. And just say, here's what I wanna do, cuz the li- like you said, that's what they do anyway. They bring it in and say, here's what I wanna do on the property, right? And and as long as there's a couple of consistent standards uh that we all that they always know they're gonna be held accountable to. Then the rest we we can work with with MDAs and MDP. So I'm I I'm not far behind with what you uh. With where you're at and I I'd say let's work on this one and then let's take the next step forward and do what you're talking about doing.
You kind of answered my question before I had a chance to say it and I wanted to ask. The positive benefits of moving towards this direction. How does this help the city and the decisions that you kinda started addressing, not giving those parameters? But I wanna expand on that a little more because it can be pushed this farther or is this a really good step?
Well, that's the great thing about code. It's a great thing about the the changing states of the council, right? Uh we we're always adapting and and there's no. That there's always, there's always new ideas, right? And and but I I do, I do like the fact that this is a. I think in my opinion, a good step forward. It it provides a little more clarity and predictability. You'll notice though that I did not, I I I forget where it is, I with my computer, I I'm not logged on, but. There there's still, I I made a real clear point in making sure that. Even though there's some discretion, it still needs to match our general plan and Mr. Davenport still back here. That is so critical as as we, that the general plan drives so many other master plans. It drives our our integrated fee schedules. And 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 the impact fees and there's just so much that is tied to that general plan. If if we base our models off of a certain density or intensity of use. Um we we should be able to, we should be able to count on that. And if we depart from that. Then there's a lot of moving parts that that have we have to take into consideration. So. Short answer is I think this is a good initial step. Is it done? Now the codes are never done. Um I'm always happy to entertain discussions. Like we have today.
So the request for council action has four specific requests in city council listed. Did you get answers for all of those? Or do you want me to walk through each one of them? Okay, so first one, um all in favor?
Yeah.
Now, so the first one is, is the city council supportive of a code amendment that includes PRD and residential zoning districts? Have a minimum front yard setback of twenty two feet?
Yes.
Great, yes.
I would, I would make that specific to garages though, because sometimes you can have a garage that's set back from the house and the garage. And the front of the house closer to the street's not always a bad idea. It could be more walkable neighborhoods and things like that, but from the garage, yes.
Yeah, and if it helps with non-conforming, I might also suggest anything built after like. January first, twenty twenty four, something like that. So if somebody has an existing home, you don't have to worry about it. Or if a home burns down, has to be reconstructed, they don't have to worry about things like that. So what, we're we're good, recovered as far as non-conforming. So uh number two, is the city council supportive of a code amendment that brings PRD into greater uniformity with the standards? Currently found in the PC zone as presented in the attachments? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, there are more than four. I'll stop counting there. Number three, is the city council supportive of changing PRD language regarding minimum development acreage? Um here specifically, does the council want to retain the discretion to approve PRD development less than twenty acres in size? So let's do the first, let's do the first question. The first half of that question, is the city council supportive of changing the PRD language? Regarding minimum development acreage. One down, two down.
Yes, but.
Yes, but, yes, but.
I would say yes, if we fix the preamble.
Councilmember Green, since uh you're on the other side of the line, I'll have you start. Um and share your thoughts and see if we can get consensus around that and then kinda go.
I'll I'll, if we go to the ten acres and I'm okay with that, I just wanna make sure that. Uh as we within just the with a follow with an immediate follow on. That the preamble to this gets fixed, that removes the large scale and adds some enforcement teeth to the preamble. That's all I wanna do.
Okay, so we've got one for that, two, three, four. Okay, Scott, does that give you what you need for that one? Okay. Please, yeah. Uh so part two of this is after the semicolon, does the city council want to retain the discretion to approve? PRD developments less than twenty acres in size. I see. Or less than ten a- as as it were. I'm just reading what's on the paper.
I, yeah, I wanna, I wanna keep the discretion element in there. I don't wanna completely dis- disregard it, so.
Yeah, I think I want the discretion too.
All right. Question number four, any other feedback or direction?
How big, how late, how big was that truck that you looked up? The length, what was the length of that truck you looked up that you showed me earlier? I was, no, I thought it was funny. We were looking at truck lengths. I'm I'm getting a twenty one foot truck and we were looking at Ford's which are over twenty two. Just up my ass. Nah, that was all. I just thought it was interesting.
All right, any other direction or feedback? It appears no. So is there anything else that that you need or Councilmember Whitelock? Councilmember Bloom, her request this item, anything else?
I appreciate you guys, thanks.
Okay, thank you. We will move on then to our next item, which is discussion of the potentially permitting. Discussion to permit daycares in conditional use in an M one zone. For those who weren't on the microphone, we had a brief little issue where. Mr. Langford thought he might get to step away from the microphone, but he does not. So this one's coming to us from Councilmember Bloom. And Councilmember Worthing, uh do one of the two of you want to?
This was. This was a long time ago when it finally get to the thing. Yes, so this was brought to me by a community who, you know, regularly meets and they have a need to have. A daycare on site for their members and it makes sense to be able to expand that in the M one zone. Not just for this particular community, but in general of of that need, um especially as more people are going back to work and it just made sense. So I uh brought it to the city and they're looking into it and now we're bringing it to here for everyone to discuss.
I'm good with it.
All right, so I'm seeing a couple of heads nod.
It's currently not permitted at all, right?
This seems to be an uncharacteristically quick consensus.
Yep.
Wait, how many jobs involved in a daycare? How many? Never mind.
My question, my question would be while we're amending the z- eh obviously, this is directed at M one. My question would be, are there any other zones? I I I I mean, I don't want it in in M two, um but are there any other zones that. A childcare would be appropriate in that we ought to add while we're doing, while we're changing the use table? That would be my question.
So is there consensus from the council to ask staff to consider that as they're bringing this back? So is there consensus from the council to ask staff to consider that as they're bringing this back? I'm seeing a whole bunch of thumbs up, and I'm assuming since it's Councilmember Green's suggestion, he's in favor of it as well. All right. We will now move on to uh discussion of twenty twenty three. Twenty, well, upcoming budget year, uh, F Y twenty twenty four, property tax scenarios. So, uh, Becky, I believe this one's gonna be you.
Yes, thank you, um, before we jump into the property tax, so I also just wanted to give you. A brief, um. Summary of the changes that we've made to the consolidated fee schedule based on some of the the council comments and feedback. So Cassidy, if you'll go to that first slide. Um, some of the comments were that some of those fees hadn't been updated for several years, and so we did go back and review. Uh that fee schedule. This is just to summarize, um, there are a handful of fees that are set by state code. Um, and so we will. Um indicate that in, in the fee schedule that will come as part of the tentative that will be adopted. Um, so we'll reference that, that's a note, um, there will be. Sorry, I'll be referencing state code. Um, others of those fees will replace those dates with a reference to say that they are intended to recover the cost of those services. And then, um, there were also some fees that although we have reviewed them this year, they did not get changed, and so we will. Uh indicate by the date, but they were viewed, not the date that they were last changed. So hopefully that addresses some of the. Um concerns. Then on the next, the next slide, some of the the changes that we will be implementing as well, we talked about the cemetery plots. Having a different fee for resident versus non-resident. Um, we'll also be including the political party rental fee, um. And that'll be based on cost recovery of janitorial services. We also are going to be including a portion of if there is. I T support that is needed, that that will also be included as an hourly charge if that's requested for those. Um Pioneer Hall, we'll put that change in, the street right key was increased by a dollar per month. And then we've also updated the garbage and recycling rates, including the the first dumpster rental fee from fifty to twenty five. Um, we will.
So Becky, I see you meant from fifty to seventy five, right?
To seventy five, yes, I apologize, that's about too many screens flashing at me right here, um. Also wanted to note that going forward, we will be reviewing the fee schedule in in January, or so we earlier before. Uh the bulk of the budget process, and so, um, we'll have. Confirmation early on in the process as far as the fees go. Any other questions about the the fee schedule? Okay, um, jumping into the the tax rate. Under the truth and taxation process, the council needs to set a property tax rate that will not be exceeded. So we're looking for the maximum amount that you're going to ask for and and not go above or beyond that. And in the recent council meetings, the discussions have indicated that there's a preference to have smaller, more frequent. The increases when needed and to avoid those large jumps in the property tax rate. So just as a reminder, the the purpose of this is with property tax increases to address. That inflation annually as we go year to year and to avoid any of those large property tax increases. This first slide shows um the history of the property tax rate for West Jordan. Um, so you can see kind of over the last ten years where that has been. And how it's been coming, coming down over time for the most part. So indicated, if you were to do a one percent increase, two percent increase. Three, four, five, and those will be on that right hand side of the the chart there. Any questions on that?
Sorry, do, so we have the certified rate from the.
We did get the certified tax rate, it is the point zero zero one four three. So under the twenty twenty three column there, which is tax year twenty twenty three, fiscal year twenty four. That's how the rate came from the county.
I was a little confused with the twenty three, considering the F Y twenty four.
Right, right, so, um, if you go to the next slide, Cassidy, um. So that the average home value, we have received this information from the county now. Um, but you can see over the last ten years, the average home value has increased by about a hundred and sixty percent. Um, whereas the property tax paid on those home, on that home value is increased by only forty four percent. Um, which increased to about nine dollars per month over that that ten year period. So that bottom line there is this twenty twenty three, that is tax year twenty three, fiscal year twenty four. And the average home value for West Jordan is the four hundred ninety two thousand seven hundred. Which with the certified rate would pay three hundred and eighty eight dollars in property tax to the city.
Why is that less?
So most of the the property values have decreased a little from last year. So if you look at twenty two, there's four hundred and ninety five last year.
Okay, but the reason the rate is actually still lower is because of commercial property.
Exactly, so the commercial component of the city has increased greater and the residential properties have decreased a bit. On average, of course, so going to the next slide for me and, um, you could kind of see. Over the last three years, that's what's done, this is showing what the average home value has has done over those years. And then that dotted line is the property tax rate.
Yeah, and I would just point out that twenty twenty two had a tax increase in it, and it still went down, so just.
Yes, and that's, and that's because of how how the commercial value is spectated.
Definitions, right, that we use of increase is increase above the certified rate, not necessarily increase above what you paid last year.
Exactly, yeah, so, um, and there is that inverse relationship that as. The values go up, the tax rate, the certified tax rate will go down. Um, we wanted to bring a couple of examples, so if you go to the next one, this is the average home value. Um, the assessed value is that four hundred ninety five seven last year. This year it came in at four hundred ninety two seven, so a decrease of three thousand dollars. Um, of course, it's only taxed at fifty five percent of that value, so it is that. That information on the second line there, last year, this home would have paid four hundred and two dollars. Forty one cents, the certified rate for twenty twenty three, where this coming fiscal year. We put that at three hundred eighty seven fifty one, which will see a decrease of almost fifteen dollars. Then there's each of those different scenarios, if you choose to increase the property tax rate by. Five percent, that home would pay three dollars and eighty cents, that's a annual amount, they would see that change. So that would bring nine hundred twenty two thousand two sixty one to the city revenues at that five percent. Other questions on this one? Okay, so the next, the next slide has a couple of um specific homes that we're chosen to show. Um, this home has a a value, a property value less than the average for the city. Um, and so they're gonna see a different decrease, even at five percent. Property tax increase, they would have a dollar amount of their property tax that would still drop from last year. Can go to the next, did you have a comment question? Okay, the next one, um, certainly different scenario, this this property value actually increased slightly from last year. And yet, even at the certified tax rate, we would still see a decrease of five dollars over here. Whereas if you choose to do the full five percent, then it would be about twenty dollars for the year, increase in their property tax.
We're all looking at each other wondering who the council members are.
Um, you can, you can go to the next one as well, this one, um, also had a had a decrease in their assessed value. As you can see, even at every, every percent scenario, they show a decrease.
This is the average to the median.
Good question, which I don't have the answer right now, but we could bring that back for you.
I would be really interested, because going back to the average, right, if we did the four percent. It would, the average would stay, this would be the same number, I just wonder how.
How many houses would that affect?
Would a larger percentage pay less, or would a larger percentage pay more?
Yeah. I would say, and I don't know if.
I bet it's probably pretty close, just from the number of houses.
Yeah.
And given this, you know, the housing stock we have here in West Georgia, I guess it's pretty close as well. The average and the median, we don't have a lot of really, really expensive homes or really, really, really low value homes. That are pulling the average one way or.
Are there low value homes anymore? Show me one, okay.
Yeah, I think that's probably fully accurate, so. I think there's one last one, um. And this, this property is higher than the average home value as well, but yet it still shows. A a decrease in the property tax that it been paid for the year.
So my question is, is this year an anomaly because we had such a. Uh, good expansion in the uh in the new growth. Is 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 some of this tied to that five hundred thousand in new growth?
I don't, I don't want that, I would say that the, that it's tied directly to that, we did get about the five hundred thousand in new growth. But I think overall, the market in terms of property values for residential has dropped slightly, I think it's tied closer to that.
Can, can I?
Okay.
So let me, let me chime in and guess, okay, big guess, but when the pandemic happened, we had an anomaly where. Uh, home values went up and business values went down proportionally, right? They're two, three years past that and there's a little bit of a reversal, and so as business values have come up proportionately to home values. What we're showing you just is the uh, the impact on residential properties, and that's why it's an anomaly where. Pretty increased property taxes this year, it's a good year to do it on homeowners because they won't see it. Uh as much because the rebound in the business properties is offsetting for the city, we get the, we get the total. Flat property tax from the sum of the business community and the residential, but as those two values ship proportional to each other. The impact on whether a property tax increase affects homeowners or businesses varies from year to year.
Right, and they're, and they're not two equal sides of the same coin, right, the total residential value and the total commercial value are not roughly equal, I don't think. Um, I I see it also, on the the other side of that is the the housing market correction. We've seen a a a softening in the housing market, the housing market was inflating ridiculously amounts, and we saw thirty percent between two thousand two. Twenty two and twenty three, or twenty one and twenty two, um, just a ridiculous. A ridiculous percentage that obviously was not sustainable, so we're seeing that kind of correct itself a little bit with the softening, the economy's softening, the housing market, so. That's, that's another reason why most places are gonna see a decrease, even if we adjust for inflation, most homes will see a decrease, or. The average home loan.
It's better going to that answer your question.
Councilmember Green, are you good there?
I'm good.
Hey, if there are other questions, if you have an Excel model, like pull up if you want me to plug in numbers and see, or. If this slides answered most of your questions, we'll leave it at that.
So we've got Melissa, who very much wants to jump into Excel, is there anybody else? All right, so consensus from the council, leave things on track with a five percent stated.
Five percent is the max, yeah, I don't.
A max of five percent, not saying we are going to do a five percent, but we are not going to exceed five percent.
Yeah, it would be a not to exceed amount that we're looking for tonight, so.
Okay, all right, any other questions for Becky? All right, I'm not seeing any, I don't see any other items on the agenda yet, it's still light outside, so. So we have a motion by Councilmember Bloom, a second by Councilmember Worthing to adjourn, all in favor?
I.
I. Ours. Given online came across as an I, so ruled out unanimous, and we'll send adjourned. Thank you.